April 19th, 2021, work session with Falls Church City Council. We are glad that you're with us this evening. Madam Clerk, would you like to read your notice?
Celeste, if you would like, I'll do it this evening for work session.
Thank you, Cindy.
The meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.2-3708.2, as state and local legislation adopted to allow for the continued government operations during COVID-declared emergency. All participating members of city council and other boards and commissions will be present at this meeting through electronic means, and members of the public can view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/councilmeetings, as well as on FCC TV, Cox 11, RCN 2, and Verizon 35. City council work sessions are conducted to allow council members to discuss upcoming legislation and policy issues. The public is not generally invited to speak. However, public comment may be sent to cityclerk@falschurchva.gov. All comments are provided in full to the members of council and will be summarized at the next regular council meeting. And Mayor, if you'd like, I'll go ahead and call Roll.
Alrighty.
Ms. Connolly.
Here.
Mr. Duncan.
Yes, I'm here.
Ms. Hardy.
Here.
Ms. Sean Hiscott is absent this evening. Mr. Lickenhouse.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
And Mayor Tarter.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And as I don't know if you mentioned or not, Ms. Hiscott is absent. She has had a death in her family, a grandfather, so let's please keep her in our thoughts and prayers. Mr. Shields, do you want to go ahead and get on with the first item on the agenda? That's a board and commission development review process concept that has been outlined previously.
Thank you, Mayor Tarter, members of council. We're joined by Paul Stoddard, Director of Planning, who will provide the staff report for this item. What we want to really communicate with the council is that we do have this proposed process for the SE review process, and we are experimenting with it right now with respect to the One City Center project and the Founders Row II projects. So we wanted to provide a report on that, but also to commit to council that, you know, whenever we make a change, we want to do that in a way that serves the city council's decision-making process and serves the community well. So we're always open to input as we're considering this, and I look forward to the council's comment on it tonight as well. The basic goal of it is to provide a bit more predictability to it, both for the public and for developers who are trying to navigate the process. The city council is the gatekeeper for the process, so the city council would see any project before it goes out to community. But before the council makes a formal decision about whether it would be formally referred to boards and commissions for a formal recommendation, there would be an opportunity for a little bit of public familiarity with the project. Some, you know, the planning commission would host a board and commission review of it just to get some initial commentary on it that would help be then shared with the city council before the city council makes its decision as to whether it would be formally referred out to boards and commissioners for a formal review. Paul, let me turn it over to you for a more detailed discussion of this, and then we'd love to get commentary, questions, and discussion on it.
All right, thank you, Wyatt. Thank you, Mayor Tarter, and members of council for having me on tonight to talk about this. As Wyatt said, it's a pilot project or a pilot process that's being tried out with the two active applications. This has been talked about previously in the EDC, the Economic Development Committee Subcommittee Meeting. I'll walk through the memo and obviously not going to read it out, but just highlight a few pieces, starting in the background section. So this is a proposed change to the way boards and commissions review land development applications, whether those are special exceptions, rezonings, comprehensive plan changes. All those things typically roll through the boards and commissions for comment, but by past practice, they typically roll through the boards and commissions fairly late in the review process. And by the time it gets to them, and here I suppose I've already stepped into the statement of the problem, by the time it gets to the boards and commissions, it's often too late in the process for them to have a real sort of substantive impact on the design. You know, the recent example I can think of is when urban forestry asks for a larger tree canopy coverage or a larger open space percentage. By the time it gets to the boards and commissions, really the building footprints and the layout of the site have really largely been set by the negotiations to that point. So that creates a bit of an impact on sort of the level of impact that the boards and commissions can have on the design of the project and the level of advice that they can give to the applicants and to the council as the project is laid out early in the process. The timing of the boards and commissions process has also created problems on staff resources. As it is, we try to pack all the boards and commissions into a month or maybe 45 days comment, and because there hasn't really been a ramp-up period with the rest of staff, either the staff liaisons or other members of the DRC to really feel comfortable presenting the project, what ends up happening is that one, maybe two case planners try to get to all the boards and commissions in the span of about 30 days or 45 days. That's extremely challenging on people's schedules, especially when these times are a little bit flexible, so it creates problems with work-life balance. And then just the scheduling logistics of having some boards meet on the same night, and so it can make a challenge with developers often having to visit multiple groups in the same night to hit the timing requirements. So what's laid out in the proposed schedule, and we've already varied a little bit from this in the pilot project just because of these two things syncing up, but the idea is to provide, as Wyatt said, a little bit more certainty, at least in the early stages of the process here. And what I really want to focus on is those first couple of months. What starts with month zero is the application submission, and of course, this is dependent on the applicant about when they want to submit an application, when they want to submit a check. It takes staff about a month to turn around an application to be ready for a council work session. So after the application comes in, we would work with the city manager to set a scheduled work session with council approximately a month after the first application. And then following that first council work session, we would look to schedule a, what we're calling a planning commission workshop with boards and commissions, with representatives from boards and commissions. We'd also look to schedule a staff-level discussion to make sure that not only that the technical staff, the development review committee, that acronym is used throughout this memo, let me just make an aside there, the development review committee is the technical staff that reviews all land applications, and there are staff members, obviously, from planning, public works, IT, public safety, housing, and I'm sure I'm forgetting other departments as well, but it's got a pretty broad reach. Wreckin' Parks, library, assessor. So it's a pretty broad group, but it doesn't necessarily pick up all the liaisons. So we would add the liaisons to some of those early staff-level meetings to make sure they're familiar with the project as well. So the idea is that after first council work session, staff liaisons and DRC get an opportunity to meet with the applicant and become more familiar with the project. And we also schedule that planning commission work session. So we had one of these so far. We had it with Founders Row. I thought the substance of the meeting went well. I think all the boards and commissions had an opportunity to send a representative and make at least preliminary comments on things they would generally like to see incorporated into the project to improve the application and the design of the project, whether that was making sure it met certain environmental standards, whether it made sure it met certain urban design expectations, questions about transportation, questions about stormwater. It was really a good range of questions that now the applicant has and can use to inform their project design. So the next.
Just to be clear, Paul, you mean Founders Row Phase II, right?
I'm sorry, yeah, Founders Row Phase II. The, so then going forward from this, the schedule gets a little bit flexible, that a lot of it depends on when is the applicant going to come back with a resubmission. We've got it labeled here in this memo as months three to four, but really that depends on how ready the applicant is and how quickly they can respond, not only to the board and commission comments they heard, but also the staff comments they received, and of course, the council comments they got at that first work session. After that, it gets reviewed by the DRC again, same as before. That takes about a month, look to get a council work session scheduled. And at that point, if the applicant had sufficiently responded to, you know, code requirements, staff comments, council comments, board and commission comments, at least early ideas, I think that's where staff would look to schedule it for council's formal referral. And as Wyatt said, nothing in this process dictates what council does at that formal referral. So council's still holding all the cards in terms of whether the project proceeds or not. So if council grants first reading and formal referral, then it would get on to the typical cycle that we've seen with past projects, that is, going out to boards and commissions for a 30- or 45-day review period, getting to a formal recommendation from those groups, a formal recommendation from the planning commission, and then bringing it back. And of course, again, council holds the final vote this time as well on whether or not to grant second reading. The, I will say that the concerns early in the process about a condensed board and commission schedule and trying to get to the groups quickly, I think the idea is that with this revised process, boards and commissions should be prepared for that second meeting, and they could also have a more focused discussion in the sense that they've already gotten oriented to the project, either by watching the taped recordings or by having their representative at that early workshop. And so here, the idea is that that 30- or 45-day window for boards and commissions would be much more manageable in this revised process. I think I've walked through the memo. I'm happy to answer questions about the memo, how things went with Founders II, or how things are going with the Atlantic proposal, which is on the planning commission's agenda for this Wednesday. Thank you.
Paul, real quick, in Month II, planning commission first work session, each board and commission sends one member to ask questions and clarify points of interest. That's new to this process?
Yes, that is new.
Right, okay. And is that more of, just to clarify, that's not, I guess it's more conversational in nature, meaning are the boards and commissions the individual that goes? Is it going to be more of a conversation, or is it a little more formal in terms of asking a question and waiting for a response? And let me, the reason I'm asking that is because I want to make sure if they show up, they feel that, you know, there's a little bit more maybe back and forth as opposed to just going there and kind of participating as a bystander almost.
Yeah, so the way it worked with Founders II, and I thought it went pretty well, the way it worked with Founders II, planning commission chair ran the meeting using the raise hands features, and in the, right, they're using the same team format that council is, and each board and commission member used somewhere between three and five minutes of dialogue with the applicant. So some people used that time to make statements, some people used it to make clarifying questions, and some people did make specific requests. So it really ran the gamut from people who, you know, sort of had set talking points, but I think more so people used it to engage the applicant, ask questions, get confirmation or clarification, and then make requests in future iterations.
And that planning commission first work session in Town Hall, that includes the DRC, which are staff, right? This is not planning commission and just the one planning commission staff? This is all happening together?
So as we intended in the memo, it was really two separate meetings, so that the liaisons and DRC is intended to be sort of a daytime meeting when staff's generally available, and it would be held at the staff level.
Okay.
Versus the second meeting, which would be a separate meeting, and that is up at the board and commission level with the planning commission. All members of the planning commission were there because it was their regular meeting night, and then most groups sent one member, and I think one group sent two. Certainly, the liaisons were certainly invited to attend, but I think it's tougher for folks to make another meeting night, so I think there was sort of limited numbers of staff on the call.
Got it. So last question related to that. Does that daytime DRC meeting and what takes place there inform much of the conversation in that planning commission meeting? Meaning, is that discussion going to be carried through to the planning commission? I just want to make sure you don't have kind of two discussions happening at different times that may not be a whole lot of knowledge transfer there between the two.
Sure. I think a lot of that would fall on liaisons in the sense that if they're in that board and commission, then, you know, making those prep phone calls to whoever's going to represent them at the board and commission Town Hall, I think it's a little bit of that falls on the liaison to say, hey, here's what I was seeing in the application as a staff member, you know, here are some things that I would recommend you raise in the planning commission meeting. In the case that it's not done by the liaison, I think it would fall to the planning staff, whether that's the case planner or me as the director, to raise the question, say, hey, I did hear this at the DRC, and I haven't heard it addressed here tonight.
Got it, okay. Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
All right, other questions, comments? Mr., is it Snyder? Dave, do you have your hand up? Let's see who else got their hand up. We've got Dave and Letty. Whoever wants to go first.
I think Letty had her hand up first, so Letty wants to go ahead.
Paul, thanks for the overview. I think as we talked about in the EDC, I'm generally supportive of piloting this. I think it's worth a try. For what it's worth, I did get feedback from Arts and Humanities last week, and they briefly touched on it, and the members thought it was beneficial. They really liked the idea of being able to chime in early, because I think in the past, when they've offered feedback, they did share some of the similar concerns, that it was too late in the process to really meaningfully change the project. So that's one board. What happens if a particular board is not represented in that Month II meeting? Do they kind of miss the boat? Do they feel like they have to then wait till Month Eight or Nine if it does formally get referred?
So no one's ever missed the boat on the opportunity to make comment. For example, the Urban Forestry Commission wasn't able to send a member to this meeting here, but they did provide written comments, and those were read out verbatim by the planning commission clerk as part of the process. And so those were certainly heard by the applicant. For any group that either isn't able to send a rep or isn't able to prepare comments to be read aloud that night, certainly they're free to pass them sort of through the case planner to the applicant, and we could flag those to make sure that those are considered as the applicant's revising their submittal materials.
Great. I think that flexibility is helpful, since this is probably another night in addition to, you know, the usually once-a-month commitment we're asking volunteers to do. Your staff really does a good job with this, but I think that goes without saying that as long as we capture the feedback that's discussed in these meetings, I think that's important. People often feel like they want that feedback, you know, regardless of whether the developer actually makes the change, if they feel like their comment was heard and logged somewhere, even if it's just an acknowledgement. I think generally people appreciate that they were heard, so let's continue doing that. A comment I'd receive is to not call these Town Halls. I think there's some confusion because Town Halls feel more like a budget presentation, something that's kind of passed and done via council, and so maybe there's a different name for these meetings and whatever we call them in Months II. Just a suggestion there. And then it's probably worth circling back with the staff liaisons. A few of the boards that I was liaisoned to the past two weeks were also confused why there's additional Town Halls. They're like, well, there's a Town Hall for West Falls Church, there's a Town Hall for the budget meeting, there's a Town Hall for One City Center, and at the end of the night, there were like four Town Halls, and I'm sure boards and commissions, at least that particular board and commission, just felt like they were swimming in Town Halls. So it's probably worth just clarifying for them which one truly are Town Halls and which ones are this pilot process, whatever we call these Months II meetings. But overall, I think it's worth giving a try, and we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. And just one more follow-up point on the idea of ad hoc comments coming in. It has happened in the past that boards and commissions have actually reviewed applications prior to formal submittal, and they have prepared written comments that, of course, we've kept on file, as well as shared with the applicant and included in any subsequent council packages.
Yeah. It's, I think worth also, because a staff liaison plays a pretty large role in this, is making sure they understand that at this stage, nothing's been referred out by council. This is their opportunity to kind of shape the project, because the earlier you do it, the better it is, right? It's cheaper for the developer, easier for the city, it's better for them. So hopefully they see that, because I want to make sure there aren't any mixed messages sent that, you know, the process has already left the gate if they're seeing this meeting.
Understood.
Mr. Snyder?
Sure, thanks a lot. So the first thing I'd suggest is formal city council action on this proposal. I have serious concerns about it. I think it shifts the leverage even more to the developers and away from the city council. It's six months before the city council makes a formal decision while the application has been circulating with boards and commissions, and the developer is providing inevitably a one-sided view of the project. After all, they're selling the project. So I have serious doubts about this, and I think I'm very concerned about it. I think it should be a formal city council action. So I think it should be scheduled for our next regular meeting or the meeting after that. Clearly, it will build up, you know, again, gives a developer multiple one-sided opportunities to make their case without a serious financial review on the part of city council. I've often said that the finances of these projects is not something that's delegable, and I think the Founders Row II project is a classic case that that should never have gone further. It should have been rejected as utterly inconsistent with our special exception, and worse yet, utterly inconsistent with reasonable financial considerations, reasonable height considerations, virtually no commercial, and strong damage to the neighborhood. So if this is an example of how this project is going to work, then this is a very good reason, in my view, for not going forward with this approach. So I don't think it was a good pilot. I think it clearly is shifting the leverage even more to the developer than they've had so far, and I think it should be a formal city council action. I also don't accept that it requires less staff time. It's still the same reviews. In fact, it's double review of staff time. So I strongly disagree with this approach. If it, the fact that it was applied to the Founders Row II project, which should never have gone forward, then that's just further, it seems to me, support in my view that this is a deeply flawed proposal. So I may make initial, additional comments as we go forward, but I strongly oppose this approach.
Vice Mayor Connolly.
Thanks, Mayor Tarter. Like Mr. Snyder, I'm a little concerned about this process for those reasons, that once people see it and get their hands on it, they think it's a done deal. So I think we need to be really clear, and Letty's idea of giving it a different name is a very good idea, like a preliminary community review or something, so people know it's like a very, very first step. But I do think that once people get involved, they get tied to it, and they do think that we're going ahead with this no matter what. And is that, like, were we at that process with Founders Row II, that we're really ready to make this one happen? When it was presented to council, there were at least three of us that were kind of skeptical of what had been presented, and I don't know if that was presented in the Town Hall, that there were, not every city council member thought this was a great idea as-is. And then I also think it would be great, if we do go ahead with something like this, to lay out a true process that people can understand on different boards and commissions. What is being asked of us during the preliminary community review? What is being asked of us at this time? And if you send one person to a preliminary community review, are they speaking for the whole group at that point? Or do they then go back to their group, talk about what they saw, come back with comments? So I think we need to be really clear about what we're expecting from citizens. And I think the sentiment of having this kind of review early makes sense, but I think we have to be really clear with the parameters and the understanding of really what is their role. Because as Mr. Snyder said, maybe Founders Row II wasn't ready for this because there were enough people that expressed skepticism about the project to begin with. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan? Did you have a comment, Mr. Duncan, or did your hand go down? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just briefly, I agree that we ought to call it something that sounds like what it is, which is preliminary and deliberative, so, you know, preliminary workshop review or something like that sounds better to me than a Town Hall, which does confuse us with the other Town Halls that we do. I mean, my understanding of this process is that it's meant to address the concerns of boards and commissions that by the time they received an opportunity to really dig into a development proposal, you know, they felt that the decisions had already been made, and they were given, as Paul said, 30 to 45 days to sort of react to the world that the council had built for them, which, you know, as a member of council, I'm kind of okay with. But, I mean, I don't want the boards and commissions to be unhappy, but, you know, it is, Mr. Snyder's right, our ultimate responsibility, but we don't cede any of that responsibility. In fact, my expectation out of this new process is that developers are going to get the full flavor of the competing interests that we as council hear and must balance, and they're going to get it earlier, and they're going to get it in a more formal setting, this workshop setting. So I would expect, you know, such meetings to be like the one for Thousand One West Broad Founders Row Phase II, which was a, you know, veritable laundry list of every reasonable board and commission, you know, proposal, you know, very detailed, quite lengthy. The applicant, of course, made a presentation, but spent, you know, most of the meeting taking notes and hearing the concerns of the board and commission representatives. So I found it to be very useful in understanding, you know, the breadth of concerns and to some degree, the depth. But also, I found it interesting that there was, you know, some understanding that the status quo on that particular location is not really what we want to see for the future of Falls Church. So I don't know if we have to have a resolution or ordinance or whatever to enact this process as a trial, but if that's desired, I certainly would be willing to do that and would support it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other comments? I'll give a few, and I'll echo the concerns of Mr. Snyder and Vice Mayor Connolly. I'm all for more input. I do think this creates the impression in the developer's mind and the public's mind that projects that go before them have a trajectory towards approval and momentum towards approval, which I think is potentially inaccurate understanding. And so to my mind, for example, taking Founders Row II as an example, to my mind, that project needs substantial changes, and before all our boards and commissions spend a whole lot of time on a project, to my mind, that really isn't ready for review, to me, we ought to establish the parameters of these projects before they're sent out in whatever fashion it might be. And so, again, I have serious reservations about this. I think that council does a good job of being a gatekeeper and looking out at the big picture, not necessarily the individual items of each board and commission, and to my mind, that is a good perspective, initial cut at these projects. So, you know, whether something like this can work, I think we just need to spend a little more time on it in trying to hone a process that does not give unreasonable expectations that your project is on a trajectory, and if you meet the 12 things that the boards and commissions told you, you'll get approved, that doesn't create that kind of impression, but that we make sure that the fundamental nature of a project is approvable before people start digging into the various details. I think that's an appropriate way to sort of go forward. So I guess personally, I would task staff with spending some more time on this proposal and how it might work, and coming up with some different ideas to present to us and that we can consider and hopefully reach a consensus as a council on how to move forward.
So. Yeah. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, I'm always happy to make things better. The, so having staff, you know, will now have the benefit of Founders II, which I understand had some mixed responses here from council tonight. I mean, obviously, I heard those on the Founders II work session, but also that's sort of now carrying over into the concern about the process for board and commission review. So certainly staff can consider that. We'll have the benefit of the Atlantic, the Atlantic preliminary workshop review this Wednesday, and so we'll have those two examples to inform sort of how we might revise this. Certainly, this memo was. memo was a first cut as a revised process. I'm glad we were able to pilot it, to see what worked and learn what didn't. And I'm happy to keep working on this to make it something that works for not only the boards and commissions as a group, but also the council as a group.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Hardy?
I had a clarifying question. So in that month, too, those two meetings, are they concurrent? Or is that second one that involves the planning commission and the boards and commissions in this new preliminary workshop, is that dependent on passing essentially a staff review first?
So they're not concurrent, but they get scheduled at the same time? So, so one doesn't, one doesn't require the other. They're just there in the same box because they would happen in the same month, and that would be the time order. But, but staff wouldn't hold the keys on whether an application is seen by the boards or commissions or not.
Got it. Maybe you need to address the concerns, because what I'm hearing is that people are worried that some fundamentals aren't there with projects. And I guess if that's the intent of that initial staff DRC review, where we check things against the SE to make sure that, you know, it does meet the criteria that council's laid out, that feels like an appropriate step to make sure that, you know, if we do want to continue with this pilot, that, that board and commission, planning commission, preliminary workshop, whatever we call that, has met that first criteria.
All right.
Yeah, this was, you know, certainly this Founders Two was a bit of an odd one in that that council first work session got scheduled pretty close in time to the update of the primary criteria for the SE. I would expect that that wouldn't be the case for future applications, in the sense that the SE criteria are now on the books as amended, and staff is applying those going forward. So that would give us a little more information at that first council work session.
All right. Thank you. Unless there's anything else, why don't I move on to the budget? Are we ready to go on to budget Q and A and the like? Mr. Shields, Ms. Bawa? Thank you, Mr. Stoddard, by the way.
Thank you, council. So for the budget, I'm going to just walk through some of the key points of a memo that was provided to the city council on the packet. And what the packet represents is, is to provide some options for the city council. We had discussed in the prior meeting, certain options of using a portion of anticipated ARPA money to help with the current year's budget difficulties that we have. And, and so this memo lays out a way of looking at that. And Cindy, maybe let's transition back to the slides, because the slides are really just trying to be a distillation of that memo. Thank you. So, next slide. So just to summarize what it is when we're talking about the ARPA dollars and how they might be relevant to the budget, a couple of points on it. First, the law was signed by the president on March 11. And in that law, it states that funding to the state and local government shall occur no greater than 60 days after the signing of that law. So May 11 is the date that we're looking for the dispersments to the state and local governments. However, there are a couple catches. One, for the smaller jurisdictions, it is anticipated that the funding may not go directly to the localities, but instead will go to the Commonwealth of Virginia. And it's possible then that if it goes to the Commonwealth of Virginia, it is anticipated that, under laws that were passed by the General Assembly last session, that only the General Assembly can appropriate funds, even if they are federal dollars meant to be passed through directly to localities. It's possible that that will be the finding. So if that's true, then we would actually expect the dollars to be received by the city after that General Assembly session. We learned today that the General Assembly is thinking about possibly having a special session in July. So that may be the time that the funds would be dispersed to the smaller jurisdictions. Those, when I say small, I mean, under 50,000 in population. As we've discussed extensively, the, the dollar amount is not yet known either, and it's really related to the special character of cities in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Independent cities are, there's, there's only three independent cities in the entire United States of America that are not located in Virginia. There are 38 that are located in Virginia. And, and so there may be some modifications to the dollar amount. So we're looking at 3.1 million. That number could be different, however. And then lastly, the actual rules that will be promulgated by the General Assembly, we're expecting them possibly next week. We hope that they won't drop them the day that the money is dispersed on May 11. And so we're hoping that next week, we may actually get some more clarity from the Treasury. Next slide. But so for a planning purposes, a key thing is that the money would come in two tranches. And so if it is 3.1 million, that would be $1,550,000 this year, and then the same amount next year. And so one way that those could be allocated is in terms of how they could affect the budgets that are before you right now is that top line. One of the things that the city council asked for is a listing of pay-as-you-go items that are in the budget, that are supported by local taxes. And, and those include the sidewalk program, which is funded at $150,000, the neighborhood traffic calming program, which is funded at $100,000, and city facilities reinvestment at $200,000. So that totals $450,000. So if that were cut out of the budget that was adopted on April 26, the first priority would be to refund those and use ARPA money for those projects, which is an eligible use. And, and it would reflect essentially the decrease in revenues that we've had across the board, and meals taxes, hotel taxes, and many other areas that would have allowed us to have, you know, a bigger and more robust budget, and possibly other modifications to the tax rate if those revenues had actually come online. But they've been greatly impacted by the pandemic. And so the, that's the way it would bear in on the decision before the council with respect to the tax rate. This would allow the tax rate to be reduced by a penny, and we'll talk about that in the next slide. But it also should be viewed in the context of other things that we're thinking about, how these dollars could be used. And that's what the remainder of this list provides. So one of those is also to cut out of the budget the drawdown on reserves to fund the schools' CIP. That could also be paid for out of ARPA dollars. To continue the COVID emergency assistance, that could be funded with ARPA dollars. To continue and expand the essential worker supplemental pay, this is for police currently and sheriff's deputies who've been working in person through the pandemic. But other categories of employees, such as public works operations, have not been eligible for supplemental pay, even though they've been working every day through the pandemic, because of the rules with the CARES Act, which are not applied to the ARPA dollars. We would fund CIP projects to the tune of $255,000. And if there's more dollars coming, I think stormwater would be a high priority for those dollars. There's also a request by the city council to consider addressing some of the needs that were articulated by the police chief with respect to meeting the use of force recommendations, but also just dealing with the general increase in calls of service that have been trending up over the past 10 years, while staff levels have remained the same. And our overall strategy in the police department has been to provide additional support for the police department in the form of public safety aides. They can help with crossing guard duties. They can help with parking enforcement. They can help with special events. Also in the budget was funding for a retiree to help administer the photo read program and the school bus stop arm program. Currently, those violations are reviewed, they must be reviewed by uniformed staffs. That takes them off the road to go do that video work. We could bring retirees in to help us with that. So one of the thoughts is, is to expand that use of retirees and temporary part-time officers who could come in and relieve the Department of additional administrative work, such as conducting criminal background checks, which many of our businesses require for their staff. We also do hackers permits for taxi cabs. There are a lot of administrative tasks that take a lot of time, and these retirees could do that work. They could also get warrants and do investigative work for our CID, et cetera. The, one other idea is we spend a lot of staff time sort of tracing, tracking, sort of administering parking violations. And if we get a software solution, it would probably be better for people who get tickets. They'd be able to track their ticket more easily, be better for the treasurer and commissioner of revenue, who also administer these. And it would be, it would save time for our uniformed police in terms of how those get administered. And then lastly, we also note the 911 dispatch consoles. That's the amount of $210,000. I'm sorry, in this chart, that number got dropped off. But that's a number that we put on the table just in, you know, we are working with Arlington County to explore transitioning our emergency dispatch to the Arlington County Emergency Dispatch Center. But we haven't completed those discussions, and there are lots of issues that need to be worked through about how we serve our community. And if we ultimately decide not to make that change, we do, we will need funding to buy the equipment to bring in the next gen 911 systems. We already have an appropriation of $200,000 in the current year budget, which we have not yet spent. We would need at least another $210,000 next year for the additional equipment for the new next gen 911 systems. So those are just some ideas. I would note, this is very preliminary, but if we're going to start drawing in on those dollars in terms of the context of, of funding some of the CIP pay-as-you-go items that would be brought out of the budget, you needed that larger context, and that's what this chart is intended to provide. Obviously, much more discussion will occur on this, and we fully anticipate that. But some initial thoughts. Next slide, Cindy? So if that council, if the council were to take that action and reduce the budget to, to reduce the tax rate by an additional penny, we've already taken $230,000 out from the May, March 11 presentation with the half penny that was taken out. If we take another $460,000, that gets made up basically through the description I just had on the prior slide. And, and then that would balance the budget. Next slide, Cindy? If the tax rate were $133, then what that would mean for the average homeowner is about a 1.6% increase in the tax bill, net of new construction, or $160. So it would still be a tax increase on average. Of course, everyone's experience may differ based on their own individual assessment. The two and a half cents then down from the current rate represents $188 savings for the average homeowner. On the commercial and apartment side, because they are already experiencing a decrease in assessed value, this would represent a 6.5% decrease in the average tax bill for commercial property owners in the city. Next slide. And so this is what that chart just would look like over, with the tax rates over the past several years, and the median homeowner tax bill is shown on this chart. And so it would be just under $10,000 for the median homeowner in the city. Next slide. So that's a summary of, of the discussion of the memo. And, you know, we'd be happy to discuss this or other options with the city council, and we look forward to that. I would also just note, attached to that memo was a summary of all of the federal funding that we are keeping an eye on, which includes the potential earmark process, as well as the American Jobs Act, which could help the city fund infrastructure needs as well. So that, I won't go into detail of that. Those have been discussed. They were discussed at your last meeting, but be happy to answer any questions to that. And we do have in the text, a few updates around the margins on that information. So let me stop there and see what questions or commentary there is, and hopefully, we can respond to any questions that the council has.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shields. We appreciate the fine work. You've done it, Ms. Bawa, and the rest of staff. Let's go ahead and open up to questions or comments. Does anyone have anything for Mr. Shields or staff? All right. Well, that was a simple budget. I'm glad we were... Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks, Mr. Shields, for that very clear description. We had a really good conversation about all of this in the Budget and Finance Committee meeting on Friday that Mr. Lickenhouse led. And I think I'm really pleased with where this is going. I continue to be really concerned about the need for help in our city attorney's office. That is something that has come up. I was reading the budget memo, reviewing it this afternoon, and my question early in this process had been, does it make sense to put more money into hiring of council or, you know, for help? Or does it make sense to have staff in there? And the response in the memo is that, that it would be very helpful with the big issues in front of us to have someone who is well-versed in all of the issues that we're facing. So I'm not sure if there's any money in this budget for that addition of personnel, but I do think that that is very important as we go forward.
Thank you very much. Mr. Duncan, or I guess why don't we just keep having the comments and reply as appropriate, Mr. Shields, or as you desire. Mr. Duncan?
Quick question. How does the Founders Row VC money factor into your calculations? Wyatt, and second, on the slide, page four, what are the items below the items that get you to 133? Reduce CIP, reduce CIP, miscellaneous adjustments. What are those there for? What do they mean? How can we consider them?
Let me actually, since I spoke quite a bit, Karen, do you want to just walk them through that chart a bit?
Absolutely. Good evening. So the miscellaneous adjustments include the state aid estimates. We received revised estimates as the state is going through their budget hearings. So there was a $35,000 adjustment over there. There is an advancement of the Body One Camera Grant that we have been awarded in this fiscal year. So instead of programming it in the next year, we're going to bring it to you as part of the May budget amendment. So that grant, as well as the match that wasn't there, that has been, has been adjusted as part of these miscellaneous adjustments. And we have $20,000 each for dispatch pay equity and for the registrar's office. So those are all the adjustments that are in the miscellaneous that add. The pluses and the minuses all come down to a $15,000 decrease in revenue and a $55,000 decrease in expenditures.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Duncan?
Well, it starts. I'll let others comment. What about the Founders Row VC money?
So the Founders Row VC money is 1.8 million. That is for now, as part of the budget, that's for the, for the schools, is part in the capital reserve. For appropriation, it will be brought to council as part of the budget amendments when we do figure out what we want to use it for, either to pay down debt service or for construction off TJ later on. So that, that'll be brought to council as part of budget amendment. But as part of this budget, it's been held in the capital reserve.
So that 1.8 million just doesn't show up anywhere in our calculations about how we might reduce the tax rate to below 133?
The VC money, no. But maybe you're talking about the tax yield?
No, I think I'm just talking about the VC. Uh, no, I think I'm just talking about the VC money. And to go back to where we were last Monday, your third quarter estimate of where we're going to end up at the end of the fourth quarter, at the end of June, on the current fiscal year, is coming to us as soon as next week or shortly thereafter?
Yeah, maybe the second week in May. We are still not received all our business licenses, which are due on March 1st, so things are a little bit slow. And so I want to make sure we absorb as much of the information that we can to come up with a, because when we bring the nine-month report, we bring our year-end projections with that, not just a scenario of the actuals. So I want to have year-end projections based on as much information we can get.
Any, any information based on where we were at the end of your last projection as far as where we're going to land on June 30?
Ms. Bawa, you are muted.
You just said the most popular sentence of the COVID life. Sorry, I'm back again. So based on the six month, the second quarter, as well as the eight-month report, our revenue actuals are somewhere around 1 to 1.3% over our budget projections. We are still seeing a mixed bag. Of course, most of them are rebounding back. We still have to see any movement on the hotel tax. And there are some of the other taxes, the cigarette and communication taxes that are, that are not rebounding, they're still on the negative. But those were negative even before COVID. So a lot of monitoring is going on as we head into the last quarter of the fiscal year.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So when you say 1 to 1.3%, dollar, dollar figure there?
Based on the eight-month budget, it's about 650,000.
Okay. All right. Well, you see where I'm going here, and I won't make a long speech, because I'll let Ross do that. He did a fine job in the Budget and Finance meeting on Friday. But, you know, I mean, in my mind, I'm sort of setting aside the external money from ARPA and infrastructure and wherever else the money rains from. I mean, I think, you know, obviously, we're going to be very busy in the spring and summer and fall. If the General Assembly meets in July, that's great. You know, we're going to be wrestling with a lot of, a lot of money by our standards, even if it's just a million and a half in the spring and summer. But, you know, right here, right now, as of next Monday, to me, it seems, you know, entirely practical, responsible, and responsive to try to get the tax rate to at least 132, drawing on our own resources and projections. So that's the end of my sort of medium length speech. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Phil. Ms. Hardy, followed by Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Thank you. Just a clarifying point from Budget and Finance, because I think we talked about it, but I want to make sure I understood. So on the Founder's Row VC money, what I think I understood from Cindy is that the ARPA money likely won't be eligible to pay off old debt. You know, we guess that's the rule that's going to come out, is we can't use it for our entire old debt. But VC money can be used that way. And so if we were to take the 1.8 million and pay off old debt that we have, what is the benefit to that by reducing our debt service? What would that translate to in terms of reduction and potential tax rate?
Our old debt, the high school debt is not callable till '26. Mary Ellen Henderson debt is pretty much coming tapering off in '25, maybe a little bit left by '26. So it can factor into paying debt service for now, and then paying down debt when we are eligible. I can look at what are some of the other older debts that may, I, I, I'm not sure certain if there is a whole lot on the school side. But the caveat on this funding is that it has to be used for purposes that help address the school enrollment growth. So based on that, the, the good two options are, of course, paying down debt on the high school or pay for construction, the debt itself for TJ when it comes to construction.
So I'm hearing you say that the new high school debt we can't apply to, it's not callable yet. How much debt do we have left for Mary Ellen Henderson then?
If you continue, keep continuing, I'll, I'll look, and I'll get you the number.
That's my main question, because I think right now, I'm pretty comfortable with $133. I think it's a good compromise, given that we were trying to make reasonable guesses while we still have some unknowns. And when I looked at the list of jurisdictions in the latest round of council questions, page, page three of 24, a two and a half cent reduction would put us in probably the top, top quartile of all the neighboring towns and counties. And so I feel pretty comfortable that we are trying to make reasonable guesses here. So for now, I think I'm comfortable with $133, but would like to think about using that VC money to reduce our debt service or debt if possible.
And, and Councilmember Hardy, just one, we'll get you maybe, once Ms. Bawa has looked at it, to see what we actually could pay down if we were to do that. But as the, kind of the rule of thumb would be, is that 1.8 million would reduce the operating budget by about $180,000, using the old, you know, sort of 10 to 1 ratio for, for debt that's, that's amortized out 20 years. That's usually the way that roughly rounds out.
That gets you maybe half a penny if so.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Thanks.
Followed by Vice Mayor Connolly.
So, man, I got to tell you, I, I really think that we need to have the courage to dig a little deeper, deeper on this tax rate. I feel like every time we have another meeting, the support for lowering the tax rate further and further continues to get better and better. I mean, Karen, the comment that you just made, that we're already coming in over budgeted revenue expectations of $650,000, and we've already shown that we could justify reducing the tax rate down from 133 when the initial proposal was to leave it where it is today, or I'm sorry, where it is today. To me, and I've spent the last couple of weeks looking at this and analyzing it, and I am supremely confident that we can get down to $131. And just looking at that tax rate map that, or graph that you guys put up, that's where we were in 2016, 2017, I believe. Maybe we'd be a half a cent lower. But, Letty, I got to disagree. I mean, I, I think frankly, if we can't get down to 131, based on all of the economic development that's taking place, based on the absolute just boatload of money that's coming from the federal government, that we can find a way to offset and, and to pay down things, I think frankly would be embarrassing and shameful for us not to try to get down to 131. And frankly, I don't even think the top quartile is good enough. I mean, we have the ability to do this, we just, for some reason, are, are stuck in this mode of being scared about the future. We're talking about $900,000 in additional savings to cut out of the budget. We've already justified easily, I mean frankly, without a whole lot of effort, getting down to $133 and being able to justify that. And we've got VC money, we've got net positive fiscal revenue coming from economic development projects, we've got potentially $13 million coming from the federal government for ARPA money. And when we're talking about getting down to two cents, and I said this during Budget and Finance, I said, if there's ever a year we're going to dig deep and try to get people back to whole, and, and, and feel that, and have everybody feel good about what they're getting from the city in return for their contribution, regardless of how you want to look at it, this is a way for us to do it. And to get down to $131 is not that difficult. And, and I even said this before, in our Budget and Finance meeting, in looking at just the trajectory of housing prices here in the city, some of that, which has been the benefit of us moving our schools back first, and I think some of the clear indication that we're going to be full-time in the fall, in addition to some of the other economic development activity paying dividends, I mean, that's making up 70% of our property tax base, and I don't see that trajectory changing anytime soon, barring any kind of, you know, some other, some other global catastrophe in the finance, the financial market. I think we're, and, and I know some may not want to hear, hear me say this, but I think we're absolutely flush with cash right now and options. I mean, we have just a, a, just a veritable smorgasbord of options to be able to lower the tax rate another two pennies. And I think we need to do it, because it gets us back to level, it gets people back to whole. And I don't think it's going to take much of a lift at all to get us there. And so I'd like to know from folks during this work session, because we're, we're on borrowed time here in terms of, of giving staff direction, if people can find it in their hearts and have the courage to drop the tax rate another two cents and get it back down to 2016, 2017 levels, forget what we're concerned about what could be, we know the money we have in front of us, we know the dollars that are in the ground that have been, been invested through economic development, we know we have the ability to cut the budget, and our own CFOs telling us that we're coming in above budget and collected revenues right now, which makes up almost the entirety of those two pennies. And so I'd like to know if folks here on council have the courage to try to, to give staff the direction to come in at a buck 31 on the tax rate, because I am 100% supremely confident that we can support that and more, based on the smart planning and management in the city. So that's my question to council, that's my challenge to everybody, because I know that we can do it, our taxpayers deserve it, and frankly, again, it would be shameful and embarrassing, in my opinion, if we can't get to it, especially when we find out in a month or two, that we have just a flood of cash coming from the government that we're, it sounds like going to be scrambling to figure out how we can spend. And so let's, let's have some courage here, and let's drop the tax rate a little bit more into something that is, is, is quite safe territory, in my opinion.
All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks, Mayor Harder. My original question was not a response to Minister Lichtenhouse, but I will say, I appreciate your optimism. I am not there yet. I feel like it's too much of a gamble at this point to drop it two more cents when we have so many unknowns. Yes, I think things are very positive for the future, but I've also, things look, seen things look very positive, and then seen us had to draw back and, and scramble for money. So I feel like our citizen, our citizens did vote four years ago to increase the tax rate to build a school that has just opened, and we haven't even begun to pay yet. So it seems to me that dropping it two more cents is overly optimistic based upon the facts that we have, although I would love to be able to do it, and maybe next year is the year to do it, once some of these unknowns come in. I'm really pleased with where city, where city staff has managed to get us this far, and the great questions of council have got us there. But I do think that the challenge I have with what you just proposed is that there are just too many unknowns still. And I would be really hesitant to set city policy on optimism and buoyancy and when we just don't know what's going to happen next. So that's, that's where I am.
Did you have other comments?
I did. So my, my other comment was related to the spending of the Founder's Row money. And that is, I just want to put in there a note that when we decide what to do with that money, we need to do that in collaboration, arm-in-arm with the school board, to make sure that we are using the money in a way that works with what the school board is wishing it to be used for. So I just want to make sure that we don't decide that in a vacuum, but that is definitely part of a community conversation.
Thank you, Ms. Bawa. Did you have a comment to make? It sounds really good, but you're, you're muted.
I have a response to Ms. Hardy's question earlier about the VC money, so I just thought this might be a good time to respond to it. So of the older bonds, we have about 300,000 remaining on the Mary Ellen Henderson, that's the 2012. And I think those are all on a 10-year call period. We have about 1.35 million left on the Mount Daniel, that's the 2014 GO bond, so it has payments up until 35, 2035. So those are the two. There is about a million left on the TJ from 2011. So tho, those are the three that I'm, I'm mentioning now. We do have a little bit of Mount Daniel and, from 2018, and we have George Mason from 2018 and '19 bonds. But those are going to be callable '26, 2026.
What are the interest rates on those? Do you know approximately?
Uh, let's see.
Those older ones are probably in the threes.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Mary Ellen Henderson might have been in the fours, actually. So that was back in 19, we'll see, 2005 is when we issued that?
While you're looking for that, did we ever get any clarity on whether we can get more interest or earnings on our reserve than, you know, .0001 or whatever it is we're getting?
Yeah, actually, our treasurer is wanting to do a, a session with, at a work session, come and talk to council and describe what are the tools that we can, we have and we can use, and some of the restrictions that we have that go with it. And maybe at our next Budget and Finance Committee, she can discuss that with, with the group. Yes. So if I may, 2013 is in the threes, 2014 is in the three and a half to 4% range that I'm seeing, because it varies, because it has the school, the stormwater, and, and a bunch of other things. And there, the terms are different on some of the projects, so this is an overall number.
So all three of those buckets would be eligible under school capacity, right? TJ, Mount Daniel, and MEH?
That's what I'm thinking, yes.
Got it. And obviously, right through now.
I'd have to, sorry, found counsel, look and make sure, to make sure the terms apply.
Okay. I'll wait for staff recommendation, but it just seems to make sense to retire some of that old debt if possible, using the VC money, knowing that, you know, if we're going to take out debt for new things, interest rates are obviously much lower now.
What's the total answer to Letty's question? And, and, and how does that factor into why it's 10% number?
So the total old debt that we can retire is about, oh, hold on.
Relating to schools.
Add it all up, yeah.
I have 2.6 million, is that right? 1 million from TJ, 1.3 from Mount Daniel, and 300 from Mary Ellen Henderson?
Yeah, about 2.6, 2.7, yeah, rounding.
And why, using your formula, that translates to about 260,000 reduction in operating budget?
On debt service?
Yeah.
Yes. Estimated, yes.
Why don't you give us the exact figures when you can, like, just send us a follow-up? And I guess it would depend on the turn, turn of loan, or the amortization, or whatever. I don't know how these are amortized, but.
Absolutely. That's the idea, that when we come to you for options and proposals for appropriation of this money, we will bring you the details on it, for sure.
Wyatt, what's the timing of this Founder's Row money? Is it when they get COs this summer?
That's correct. So before they get their, their first residential CO, they need to make the payment. So we're anticipating that would be September?
And out of other options, I guess, in the tax rate options, I guess, this is the only one so far that has risen high enough for me to, to consider anything below $133, as much as I would love to share in Ross's optimism, I want to make sure I see numbers behind the tax rate. And I wouldn't be comfortable making cuts without seeing some more concrete numbers from staff. But this is, I think, has potential. I don't know how the timing of this VC money coming in would affect the tax rate as it relates to FY '22.
Let me ask, I thought I saw Greg Anderson join our call. Is he on the call? Just, I'll give him the opportunity to comment if he'd like. Looks like maybe he's not on the call. I thought I'd seen him earlier join.
He does appear to be here, as well as Superintendent Newman.
Okay. So they're both here. If either of you would like to comment, you're certainly welcome to. You don't need to, we're just, as a courtesy to you, give you the opportunity. You don't need to, we're just, as a courtesy to you, give you the opportunity. So let me just say then, just sort of, are there other questions or comments about the budget right now? I mean, it sounds like there's a consensus to go at a minimum to 1.33. And the question is, can we go beyond that? And I guess I might task staff with, in the meantime, some of the options and things you've heard about this evening, to try to put those together and see if there's any room to go further.
So, you know, one thing, if we were to execute the debt buydown to get a full year's debt service savings out of that, so we would pay debt service typically in December and June, is that correct?
That's correct. It's normally either December or June or January and July. Since the tax money comes in December, the treasurers prefer January and July. But, and it's likely that if we were to refund in this fiscal year, the payments will not come in, kick in till any changes in our commitment for debt service probably would not kick in till next fiscal year.
Why wouldn't the payment, I guess they're in arrears, right? So the June payment is already basically, the interest is already accrued. But not for the second half of the year?
Right. I mean, if we were to issue in fall, we could structure it such that we make a payment in June. Normally, we would not make a payment till July, just because June is our tax time receiving the tax money. So just so the in and outs don't clash. However, it can be done if we want to. And that would mean one payment for fiscal year '22 that can impact. Otherwise, if it's structured like it's in a typical way, then it would impact starting July of '22, which falls into fiscal year '23.
Okay. Other comments, questions? Mr. Snyder?
Sure, thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. So I think we're making progress here. We started off good and the assumptions seem to be getting better as we're going along. There's some uncertainties. I think over the course of this discussion, we've isolated some costs that we could responsibly do to get down to the 1.33. Proposals to go lower, I think we've seen some ideas for that. I mean, I think I first raised the issue about the extent to which the current operating budget is carrying debt service and how do we reduce that, and that's the most recent discussion. I'm also interested a little more in the projections for the performance this fiscal year. And if it's possible to get lower, I think everyone would like to do that, certainly. I'm very much in that camp. But this is not a matter of how I feel or anything like that. This is a matter of hard numbers and how we can make sure that we are building in adequate protection for some unknowns. If you've lived through really tough circumstances, you realize you have to plan for that. But there seem to be a lot of pluses here. And the federal funding is like an additional plus out there, hopefully more than 3 million. But even at that, it's significant. So I think I am where, Mayor, I think where you were going, which is I'd like to try to get some more, but I want this work through so that the savings is not based on a feeling, but is rather based on responsible balancing. And so I think a bit more data is on that. I want to see staff come back with the ideas that we've proposed, or maybe some additional ones, to get it down lower. It seems like we are potentially in reach of that because of a number of things. Again, even if we're wrong, we have an unusual situation with contingent money that's otherwise has never been available to the city. And we seem to be doing, performing well this fiscal year. And it seems that we have some committed money from a development that seems relatively certain at this point. So when you put all that together, it does argue to keep keeping the dialogue going to see if we can go lower. But I don't want to do that just upon feeling. I want to go based upon a hard look at the numbers. And I think we've had some good initial discussion tonight. So that's kind of where I am right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Duncan?
I agree with Mr. Snyder.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? If not, I guess I would just say what I think I said or started to say earlier, which is, let's keep working. We did hear some more ideas today, and we'd certainly welcome staff's additional thoughts on how we can provide as much relief to our taxpayers as possible. So I guess I, again, would encourage you over these coming days to do a final push, to see what we can do to get this number as low as possible. And we'll keep working. So with that, unless there's anything else on the budget issue, let's move on. We do have a closed session, a brief closed session tonight. Before we get there, we're just going to go to council schedule and comments. Are there any comments folks have, scheduling questions, Mr. Duncan?
Just to note that the Economic Development Committee meets this Thursday at 1 o'clock. Members have any requests for the agenda, send a note to me or staff and we'll try to get an agenda out probably after the mayor's meeting.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Thanks, Mayor Charter. I just would like to note for everyone that the Women's History Walk is Sunday, May 2nd. It is from 11 until 2:00. There are three starting points in the city. One is at City Hall, one is at the Tanner Hill Memorial Site, Tanner Hill Historic Site, and one is at Big Chimneys Park. And for social distancing purposes, we're not going to have a big starting moment. People can start along the walk, it's about a two-mile walk. There are a number of restaurants that will be open, so you can even make it a longer walk and stop and visit a local establishment. I do want to thank city staff for what they're doing. Cindy, I noticed that there was something going on on Maple Avenue today. It looked like there was a curb cut going in.
Yeah, that was one of the curb cuts still owed from the initial sidewalk that weather had delayed. And then, of course, it rained today, but it's going in.
Okay, very good. So city staff has been helping with cleaning up the route and getting things together. And there's some advertising out there, and there'll be more of that in the next couple of weeks. So please share that with your friends, your relatives, neighbors, colleagues, and please join us on the walk.
All right, and thank you for your leadership on that. I know there's been an awful lot of work to put that together, so we greatly appreciate you and the other folks who have organized this and look forward to attending. Mr. Snyder?
Sure, thanks a lot, just following up on the Women's Walk, absolutely. Thank you, Mary Beth, and all those involved. I spoke to a couple organizers and they had a list of suggestions that would improve not only the route in terms of its appearance and functionality, but the kind of things they propose or proposing would make that whole route area better in the future in terms of some improvements. So it sounds like some of those are moving forward, and I would certainly urge consideration of the rest of them. Secondly, I wanted to report, I had a prior meeting, requested the views of the city council on DC statehood, and the views were to support it. I consequently did vote in support of it, that passed unanimously by the Council of Governments Board of Directors. So we'll see what happens next on that topic. So that's what I had, I just wanted to make a report back to folks. And thanks for your comments and your advice on that.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Snyder, and we appreciate your work and that a very important organization. Any other comments or questions or requests before we move to go into closed session? All right, I just text the city manager and assistant city manager. I don't have the motion to go into closed session as part of my packet.
And I confess, I don't either. Maybe Ms. Heath has it available?
I think it's on the printer, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you want to walk down the hall, somebody walk down the hall and see, get it.
I have the hard copy in chambers if you end up needing me to read it for you. It may have been a separate printout from what I pulled earlier for you, Mayor.
All right, well, the city manager, I just heard him run down the hall. So depending on his speed in the 30-minute dash, he should be here any second now. Hot off the presses. So unless there's any further conversation, I'm going to go ahead and read a motion to go into closed session, then request we take a short five-minute break to allow the cameras to come down or whatever they need to do. So the time is 8:51. And upon a motion made by Councilmember.
Connolly.
Connolly, and seconded by Councilmember.
Hardy.
All right, we got that enthusiasm here for this motion. And passed by voted city council, council wanted a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1, personnel for discussion of performance of specific appointees of city council, preparation for individual employee evaluations of the city manager, city attorney, and city clerk for annual review. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yeah.
Is Scott is absent? Snyder?
Yes.
Charter, yep. All right, so let's take a five-minute break till 8:58, and we'll reconvene in closed session. All right, thank you. We're coming out of closed session. We're going to go ahead and do a motion to come out of closed session and then a certification as to what was discussed in our closed session. So upon a motion made by Councilmember.
Connolly.
Hardy.
Want to say Connolly, seconded by Councilmember. And passed by voted city council, council reconvened in open session. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Is Scott is absent. Snyder?
Yes.
Charter, yep. It is 9:10, this is our certification. Upon a motion made by Councilmember. Seconded by Councilmember.
Lichtenhouse?
See, this meeting will go to midnight. Lichtenhouse, okay. And passed upon affirmative roll call vote in open session. It was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard discussed or considered in the closed session meeting by the body. Vice Mayor Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yeah.
Is Scott is absent. Snyder?
Yes.
Charter, yep. All right, so we're pretty near dawn. Anything else anybody wants to say before we adjourn?
No.
What are you going to do with your evenings? That's about the only thing I can think of right now. So anyone, everyone have a great evening, and I'm sure we'll make up for it next week. So let's go ahead and adjourn. Good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Good evening, stay safe.
Thank you, council. See you next time.